Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Clovis Veterans Memorial District. Thank you for joining us this wonderful afternoon for the Clovis Unified School District Governing School Board Candidate Forum. I'd like to invite Larry Powell, former Superintendent for Fresno County Office of Education, to come up and serve as our moderator, but first and foremost, to lead us in an invocation.
Thank you. Please stand with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity in America to be able to freely decide and vote and to make decisions, and you've granted us that, and we thank you for it. We ask you to give us a great sense of your presence today as we are doing some holy work in working with our kids and how important it is for the future of America and each of our families. We thank you for it, and in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. While you're standing, would you please remain standing and join me in saluting our flag? Veterans, if you're in the room, you're authorized to render a hand salute. Everyone, if you would, put your hand over your heart and follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Dr. O'Brien, the Clovis Unified School District Superintendent, will be joining us. Unfortunately, she was delayed, and so we'll welcome her when she arrives. But for now, I'd like to formally welcome you to the Clovis Veterans Memorial District and invite you to sit back and observe this great exercise of the election process. And you might ask, why are we holding it here? Now, the best way of honoring our veterans is to make their sacrifice matter. And every veteran swears an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States. And our candidates, whoever is elected, will take an oath to do the same, as they work together to provide the best learning environment for the next generation of citizens. So it's absolutely appropriate that we would hold it here at the Veterans Memorial District that is charged to honor military service and serve the community since 1946. With that, I'd like to invite Guillermo Moreno, who is a talk show host with radio KXCS, to come up here, and he too will be serving as our moderator.
Good evening and thank you. I want to welcome the candidates. Good to see everybody here. Good to see our audience. And I just want to remind everybody that we are broadcasting, and we want to thank our media partners, CMac Television. CMac, we're streaming live to Facebook, and we're on-demand at cmac.tv. We're also on KGMC 43.2, Comcast Channel 77, and Dish Channel 39. At this time, I want to, I'd like to invite...
Dr. Eimer O'Brien, if you would come forward, Superintendent of Clovis Unified. And if you'd like just to make a couple of opening remarks, that would be great. Radio listeners are so glad that you've joined us today. I love the exercise of democracy in real time. So, Dr. Eimer O'Brien, nice to have you with us.
Good evening, Larry. And yes, this is definitely in real time, because I didn't know I was going to be making some comments, but I am here as the Superintendent of Clovis Unified, but also a citizen of this community who's very invested in making sure that Clovis Unified School District continues its 62-year legacy of absolute excellence, not only in this community, but in the state of California. The vision for Clovis Unified and our strategic plan is that we are the benchmark for excellence in America. And we have continued to do that, and so we are very eager and anxious to hear, you know, about this evening's forum, what these candidates have to say. And as always, my role as Superintendent is to implement the vision of our Clovis Unified Governing Board, and so I'm very anxious to hear what their vision for Clovis Unified is.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Eimer O'Brien, Superintendent for Clovis Unified. We're so delighted that you're here. And now, candidates, let me give you a couple of instructions, but first, I would like to introduce each of you. So we have with us here first is Samantha Bauer, a parent and communication consultant. We have Joanne Burton, a realtor. We have Chuck Der Manuel, a parent and businessman, and they are running for District One. And then with us joining at the dais today, but not competing against these three, will be Deana Combs Flores for Clovis District Six, a teacher and parent. So we will begin with some questions, but I wanted to give you a little bit of insight. We've mentioned before, each candidate will have one minute to answer a question, and we have a big timer in the back so that they can see that. We also want to let you know that you'll get different questions from Mr. Moreno and myself, so you will not have the same questions, but there will be a couple of questioners who come up and ask you, and each of the four of you will answer the same question in those cases. We'll definitely let you know in advance when that's going to happen. So we're going to begin right now. We're certainly glad that you've joined us, and I just want to make a comment how important it is in America in a political position for board. The Board of Education, I think, is the most strategic elected position in America because it has an impact on every family in America. So first, I want to congratulate each of you and thank you for being willing to put yourself out there to run for this office, because it is so important to the life of America, the life of our students, the life of our families, and we're delighted that you have chosen to do that. All right, here we go. Question number one, and Samantha, we'll begin with you. Why are you running for the Board of Education? And if elected, what are your priorities? And you have one minute.
I started my career in statewide public education policy in Sacramento. From there, I went to work on the front lines of public education, serving the superintendents and boards of education in two of the largest school districts in California. But more important than my professional background is the fact that I'm a proud parent and volunteer in Clovis Unified for 15 years. I've been in the classroom, president of the parent club. Currently, I'm the Chair of the Citizens Oversight Committee. I am running for Clovis Unified School Board because I believe in strong neighborhood schools that deliver the kind of education that our kids and our community deserves. And I believe we need to get back to basics. We need to focus on student learning and making sure that we are supporting our teachers in the classroom. I am the candidate that has the education, experience, and the passion to serve our kids. Let's get back to basics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next question is for Joanne Burton. Is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the Board of Education?
Yes, there is. There's actually four, and I'd have to say, I discovered what those were attending a parent town hall meeting, which was quite different. After attending several of the Clovis Unified School Board meetings, the parents put on their own independent meeting. And from that meeting, I took away some very different perspective. The parents were feeling their children were not up to academic grade level, particularly after the shutdowns and the mandates. The parents were very concerned that they were not given adequate time in the public forum to speak their views and be heard by the board. And the parents were very concerned about the curriculum upcoming. They wanted transparency in the curriculum, and I feel if I am elected, if I can help the parents retain their respect and get those questions answered and help them.
Thank you. Chuck Der Manuel, what particular experiences or skills have prepared you to serve as a board member?
That's a great question. First and foremost, the biggest skill that I have is as a parent and as a community person dealing with other parents, ones that I've spoken to more recently in the last two years, one of the things that I've noticed is that because of this pandemic, all the parents are starting to pay attention. And as I've spoken to them, I think that our priorities have veered away from what our standards should be. So what I'm trying to accomplish by running is to be the voice of the parent and to treat the parent as a customer. That is first and foremost what we need to start doing again. And the further we get away from the school site to administration, that's not happening now. So that's why I'm in the race.
Thank you.
Next question is for Deana, who's running in Area Six. In what school district or community activities organizations have you been involved, and how have you been involved?
Well, I've lived in the area for 16 years now, and the whole time, I've had children go through Clovis Unified School District. But during that time, I've also worked full-time as a teacher, and I've had the opportunity to work in many different districts. I've worked in Madera, I've worked in Merced. I currently work for Fresno County Superintendent of Schools for a court school, and I teach math. I've also during this time throughout my, I was a stay-at-home mom before I ever became a teacher, and so I was very involved with PTA and coaching my kids in their soccer. And then since I've been a teacher, I still have continued to be involved volunteering in the schools as much as I could within my work schedule. And I just, that's why I'm running, because it's important for me as a parent to continue to have a say and be involved in my children's schooling. I currently have a student at Clovis High still.
Thank you. Samantha Bauer, why should you be elected to the Board of Education?
First and foremost, I am a parent and a volunteer for 15 years in Clovis schools. I understand the culture. We have a culture of excellence. We press everybody in the system for high performance, and we have high expectations for everyone in the system, and we don't apologize for that. We are anchored by our founding Superintendent Doc Buchanan and Doc's charge. And when I was reading that document recently, the word "compete" and "competition" was repeated a couple of times, and you know, you have some, those that criticize, oh, you know, Clovis Unified doesn't understand, you know, education shouldn't be about competition. But the point is, Doc said the best competition is that against yourself, pressing our students to strive for their personal excellence. What we call that today is growth mindset. I understand the culture. I've been here for 15 years, and I have a background in public education. Thank you.
Thank you.
This next question is for Joanne Burton. What differentiates you from the other candidates and/or board members?
Well, I think the key difference is I am not running because I have a child in district, nor do I have grandchildren. I'm concerned about the future. I'm concerned about parents who don't realize their place in education is being overridden by the school board and Sacramento. So I'm really here for reclaiming the parents' rights as the number-one decision-maker in the education of the children, with the teachers, administrators, working in partnership with the parents to achieve this excellence, and not the other way around.
Thank you. Chuck Der Manuel, how many school board meetings have you attended or other school events?
Well, the last two years, it's been really difficult to attend them, but I can tell you that I have watched almost all of them online, and I have been in person at three or four. As a matter of fact, I spoke at one back in February advocating for the children to have the mask removed. I believe that was a big hindrance over the last couple of years, and that we didn't push back hard enough against that. So I'm very in tune with what the board has been doing. And the reason that I decided to get more involved is because, one, our kids have to come first; two, we have to get the parents and keep them involved now that we have their attention. And the curriculum that's coming down the path and the other social and gender identity issues that are coming, we have to have someone on that board that's willing to push back and stand up.
Thank you.
This next question is for District Six, Area Six, candidate Deana Combs Flores. What is the single most important job of a school board?
The school board? To listen to the parents and to educate our children, just like Mr. Der Manuel just said, or actually Ms. Burton said. And I think, just, I just want to say this, I think for the most part, Clovis, I've been here in this area for 16 years. I've had three children graduate from Clovis East High School. I've had one graduate this year from Clovis High, and I have another one who's a junior at Clovis High. And for the most part, I actually believe that Clovis Unified School District has done a pretty good job despite all the mandates that have come down from Sacramento. But I believe that it's important that the school board needs to listen to us parents, but also at the same time, we need to fight for our kids. So I think we're a team between the parents and the schools to fight for our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deana. At this time, I want to welcome up to the stage Greg Newman, President and CEO of the Clovis Chamber of Commerce. He will ask the candidates two questions, and all the candidates will get one minute to respond to each question.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
I'm a little short.
Okay. Can you hear me there? Okay. The importance of Clovis Unified to our community is instrumental. I mean, I'm not instrumental, but it's just huge. So let me kind of just talk about the business side of what Clovis Unified means to the Clovis way of life. When Clovis builds a facility, and all these fantastic facilities, there's people that come from all over California to come to tournaments, to programs, to performances, and that brings in tourism tax dollars to our community. They also provide high-paying jobs to our teachers, and they, it really helps ignite our community, and it helps our business community. It also helps fill our hotel rooms when the visitors come, and also our restaurants. So when I talk about the school district, and when we're selling Clovis as a Chamber of Commerce, that's the number-one thing. Families are coming from all over California because they want a good education for their families, their kids. So they come to Clovis. They see the grades, and that just helps create additional revenue for our community. So with that being said, you know, we want to talk about what happens next? What happens when our children graduate from Clovis Unified? So my first question is, what is your stance on Clovis Unified working with our local business and manufacturing community workforce readiness for those students who want to enter the workforce right out of high school? So...
In Elk Grove Unified School District in Sacramento County, we actually had a partnership, and it was a certification with a networking company. And these kids came out of high school making, you know, six digits. So it's definitely doable. The work that the district is leading on career tech ed, you know, at Clovis West, excuse me, the Diesel Mechanic Program, there's incredible work going on there, preparing these kids to have real-world skills and in a trade upon graduation. And it's absolutely critical that we continue to find partnership with industry and certify our teachers so that these kids have meaningful skills upon graduation from Clovis Unified. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha Bauer and Joanne Burton.
Well, I think we have to preface it by saying we all acknowledge that vocational ed and technical training had been removed from the schools, and now they're trying to build it back in. Well, that was a big mistake, and I hope that, I hope I will be a big supporter of bringing that back in, because college track is not for every kid. And the value of the personal development as well as the technical availability when you are learning a skill in school is just invaluable for the overall development of a student. But I do want to point out, I had a story told to me of a valedictorian of Clovis High School who, of course, you know, great GPA, last year got accepted into a college in Tennessee and found that they had to take remedial education just to catch up as an incoming freshman. So that's some of the realities that we have to face.
Thank you, Joanne Burton. And now Chuck Der Manuel.
Well, I moved into Fresno in 2003, so almost 20 years ago, and the first thing everybody told me was, no matter where you build a home, you've got to build it within the Clovis Unified boundary. And what I found is, as it relates to public education, it's one of the best. But now that I've been in the insurance business for about the same amount of time, what I've learned is, we have to prepare students for many, many different jobs that don't necessarily require college. So we not only have to prepare them for college, but prepare them for any other job that can be meaningful and make a living in their life. We, in my insurance business, we insure plumbers and electricians and contractors. The vocational ed is huge, and it's very important. And the programs through Clovis Unified like CART are really a catalyst to get their brains learning different things that can be used in the workplace. The other thing is, the art program within Clovis, I mean, we need artists, we need dancers, we need theater, and we need performers, and I think it's really important that that meshes with the community of Clovis.
Thank you, Chuck Der Manuel. And now, Deana Combs Flores.
Thank you. Number one, I think it's important that we all know that in the community, the stakeholders in a school is a large organization. It includes the students, it includes the parents, includes the teachers, it includes the administration, but most importantly, it includes the community. And I have a specific experience. I worked in Madera Unified School District for four years, not only as a middle school and high school teacher, but I also worked for Madera Adult School, and they had a partnership with Workforce. And so I'm all in favor of having a partnership with Workforce, because the reality is, although there's a lot of students that will be A through G qualified, there's many who will not be, and Workforce provides an opportunity for these students to get another type of career in their lives.
Thank you, Deana Combs Flores. Greg, next question?
Okay, thank you. You know, it was Doc Buchanan who realized that our school district would be a big part of our community, and our community, through the support and passing of bond measures, would be instrumental in the district's growth and success. In doing so, Doc Buchanan decided to open up CUSD facilities to our community to use on the weekends and when school was not in session. This access has had an incredibly positive impact on our Clovis way of life. What is your stance on maintaining this position of allowing our citizens to access the CUSD facilities for recreation and leisure?
Samantha Bauer.
It's absolutely critical that we provide our facilities to our community. We ask our community to support our school bonds so that we can maintain the original investment in our schools, and we can continue to provide high-quality facilities to all of our students. It sends a message to our kids. Your education is important, and when they are all coming to a school that has high facilities, high-quality facilities, no matter the age of the school. I've traveled up and down the state of California with my own kids and visited other schools, and I got to tell you, our facilities are well-maintained, and they send the message that we care about our kids' education, and they're absolutely a community resource and a community treasure that we all should take advantage of.
Thank you, Samantha Bauer. Joanne Burton.
Well, I would have to agree with Samantha. You could drive up and down the state, and you will not find more beautiful campuses. I had heard, I bought in Clovis Unified because I knew it was a sound investment to own a home where there's a great school district. So I would not forget who, where the bond money comes from. It's from the property, your property taxes, and certainly that should be open to the community as much as possible.
Thank you, Joanne Burton. And Chuck Der Manuel?
Well, I agree with what the others have said. I mean, the bonds are critical to keep these facilities nice and maintained. They're beautiful. And one thing that sets our community apart is that they're not only beautiful, but they're memorable. These kids come and compete against the best, be it at the Veterans Memorial for the track meets, or football, or soccer, or swimming. And I have plenty of people I went to high school with that have their kids going through there, and it's memorable for the kids, and I think the experience of it is just as important as the facility. And if you build it, they're going to come. And I think keeping that access open, and especially for the arts as much as it is for the sports, is critical for our community.
Thank you, Chuck Der Manuel. And then from Clovis Six District, Deana Combs Flores.
I definitely support continuing the use of our facilities for leisure. As I mentioned in the last question, educating a student, there's many people and organizations involved, there's many stakeholders in that. And one of the things I was impressed by, I lived in Sacramento County also prior to moving here 16 years ago, and one of the things that I've been really, really impressed with is the feeling of community in this area. I lived, up until recently, I lived just right across from Clovis High School, and I noticed every Sunday when I left for church that there was a church services that were going on in Clovis High School, and I always thought that was so wonderful, that those facilities were able to be used to our public. And so I definitely would support the continued use. Everybody has to have a buy-in. Just like students have to have a buy-in in school, so does our community.
Thank you, Deana Combs Flores. And now a question for each one of you. It will be probably fairly short, can be a yes or no, and if you'd like to expand on it, you may do so. So let's start with Samantha Bauer. Are you running with any organized slate of candidates, and if so, which ones?
No.
Thank you, Samantha. Okay. Joanne Burton?
No, I would say I'm the outlier. I'm the only one who hasn't lived here for 16 to 30 years with kids through the district, as if those are the only people who can appreciate what we have here and what needs to be improved. So I believe in excellence in education and parents getting, being the primary decision-maker of where their kids go and what happens to them in their educational experience.
Thank you, Joanne. And Chuck Der Manuel?
I don't have any organized committee that I'm running with. I do have many friends that are also seeking office that I'm supporting, but it's not formal.
Thank you, Chuck Der Manuel. And Deana Combs Flores from District Six.
Definitely no. I'm running, number one, because I'm a patriot, and I believe the only way that we can have a say in our community is to get involved and to vote and to be active in our child's lives. And I've done that for the last 32 years. I've been raising children. My sister passed away three years ago, and I'm also raising my niece, who I've got guardianship, and she's the one that's now a junior at Clovis High School. And so I'm running because I want to have a continued interest and involvement in the education of my children and possible grandchildren, too.
Thank you, Deana Combs Flores.
All right, same thing. If we can get a quick response from everyone on this next question. Have you received any donations or endorsements from any groups? If so, which groups? And we'll begin with Samantha.
So I am endorsed by two former Clovis Unified Superintendents, Dr. Terry Bradley and Dr. Joanne Burton. As far as an organization, I'm proud to have earned the endorsement of Moms on the Ground Clovis Unified, a group of grassroots moms that helped to get our kids back in our classrooms. But I did not seek political party endorsement, because this is a nonpartisan position.
Joanne?
Well, I'm endorsed by NOLA Turn for Education. I'm endorsed by Major Terry Sladek, Fresno Unified School District. And my pastor, Anthony Flores, has given me his verbal endorsement, yet he cannot give the official endorsement in his capacity. And Kevin Cookingham has given me his blessing, but also cannot give his official candidate endorsement.
Thank you. Chuck?
Yes, I've received one endorsement last week from the Fresno County Republican Assembly, but I would also like to say that I'm running for this office not as a political candidate. I think there's one party. It's the party of the parents. And if you look around what's happening in the country and people paying attention finally in cities across this United States, it doesn't matter your political party, the parents are united for the kids, and that's why I'm here.
Thank you, Chuck. And Deana?
Yes, I'm right there with Chuck. I'm definitely running as a parent, but I am proud to say that I am endorsed by the Fresno County Republican Assembly, and I am endorsed by the Fresno County Central Committee, GOP.
Thank you. Next question, and this will be for Samantha. What characteristics or traits make a good school board member?
So my experience with two school board, or schools districts, I know what good governance looks like. A school, a good school board member understands their role in governing and not managing and not dipping below the line. A good governing board member knows, understands their role in overseeing the budget, school discipline, curriculum, and is a good listener and understands that you must represent a wide variety of people's views and must be someone who is inclusive to other ideas. must be, um, someone who is inclusive, uh, to other ideas. And, um, again, understands that good governance. Um, I think we, we, that is a really important word is, is governance. It's governing and it's not managing. Thank you.
Thank you Samantha Bauer.
Next question is for Joanne Burton. What do you see as a primary work of the Board of Education?
Well, primarily, they're there to, um, uh, hire the superintendent and do oversight. They approve budgets, which, uh, this is not a small thing. I have seen, um, a packet come to Fresno Unified, uh, of just before, a few days before a meeting, they're two inches thick and they are filled with information that a trustee is obligated to review and know, uh, before they come into the meeting and vote. Uh, not to mention oversight is a big category that we are responsible for. That incu- includes curriculum.
Thank you, Joanne. Uh, Chuck Der Manuel. How, how does the role of a school board member differ from the role of superintendent or administration?
Well, the, the school board of trustees are gonna set the direction for the district in coordination with the administration. And the superintendent will take the cues from the board of trustees, just like Dr. O'Brien said a few moments, moments ago. And we have a great track, track record in Clovis and we just have to continue to follow that blueprint. There's a few other things that I think can be approved upon as far as the trustees. A couple of those are, how do we become more transparent for the parents? How do we get them involved in the decision-making process? And explain the decision-making process. But for the most part, it's hand in glove. It's the trustees with the superintendent and the administration to do the best things we can do for our kids.
Thank you.
This next question is, uh, for Dina, and which will be our last question before I introduce to you a Clovis, uh, high school student. So for Dina, what is the best way to address differences of opinion on the board or between the board and the administration?
Well, here comes my, my school experience. The best, the best way to handle disagreements is, number one, all parties need to be heard. And you need to listen. Um, too often, we don't listen. So I think on a board, there's seven people elected for a reason. And every person needs to be heard. And then at that point, we have to come to a consensus. And, and sometimes coming to a consensus means that maybe one person who maybe is an outlier, maybe they're, they don't get what, um, they want, but at least they've been heard. And, um, and so, but again, like the organization is, um, set forth. We have our administration and then we have our board and then we have our superintendent. And we need to all work together under California Education Code and do the best that we can do in that circumstance.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to welcome Ethan Sayer, who is a senior at Buchanan High. Ethan? And every candidate will get, uh, get one minute to respond to Ethan's question. Well, I promised Ethan that I would leave the, uh, the question up here. And I'm not sure if it is on the back. All right.
Lorenzo.
Lorenzo.
Can we borrow your phone?
Yes. In the meantime, Ethan, uh, will give a short introduction of who he is and robotics.
That's right. I'm part of the robotics team at Buchanan High School and I play guitar and, uh, that's about it for me.
That's good. Music and robots, I can't think of anything better.
Thank you. Okay, candidates. There seems to be a lack of communication between the schools and the community regarding opportunities for their students. Many in the community are unaware of the various successful student programs and many students are unaware of programs offered by the community. How will you bridge this communication gap?
Samantha Bauer?
Well, communications is what I do. Um, yeah, so, so there's plenty of opportunities to communicate out, uh, and, and, um, you know, I think through, through social media, direct communication with, with parents and students. When you're talking about opportunities, uh, for kids, um, there are opportunities throughout the school district, um, in other schools perhaps, you know, with the Career Tech Ed and, and CART and, and all of that. I know that there's the CART Information Night. So there's, you never are quite done with communication. And anytime anything goes bad, it's always because of communication. So, um, as a school board member, I would continue to press and make sure that we continue to communicate out using all vehicles to make sure that kids understand the opportunities that they have. And by the way, I was a robotics coach for my son in, in elementary school and I had no business doing it. Thank you.
Thank you Samantha. Joanne?
Yes, thank you. Uh, that's, that would be a really important piece of communication. Um, students need to know what opportunities is what I hear you saying. Uh, I have gone on some of the school websites and I find them a bit cumbersome and maybe not reaching out to the students to let them know, hey, we have a robotics club and we have room for kids, for one example. Um, on the ca- on the campus sites, there certainly should be some active presence, uh, perhaps tables, you know, on lunchtime. I, I'm not sure how it works in your particular school, but there should be no reason, uh, students do not know the variety of offerings on the campus. So, um, I would love to be a part of bridging that communication gap.
Thank you, Joanne. Chuck Der Manuel?
First, uh, Ethan, thanks for being here and thanks for the question. I hope it's rock and roll. You play on that guitar? My favorite. I wish I could play. Um, but to answer your question, I think there, there tends to be in some instances over-communication of some of the programs we have within Clovis. And if you have an attention span like me or people like my brother, if you get an email from Peachjar, you roll your eyes and go, what is this? There's 18 flyers to get to the bottom. Um, there's other methods of communication, um, that we get as parents and it's hard to decipher it. One of the things we can do to improve the communication is put the subject line on there, interested in robotics, and have it be blasted out individually because people aren't scrolling to the bottom of this communication. I think it can be improved. I think that's one way to do it.
Thank you Chuck. Dina Combs Flores?
I think the methods are there. I've been a 16-year parent, you know, and, and as, um, Mr. Der Manuel said, um, Clovis Unified is very well, uh, and very good at communicating through, um, I have this CUSD app on my phone. Um, we receive emails, I receive texts, and, and so I think it's more, we, the methods are there, but I think it's more educating our parents that they are there and allow, and letting them know that they're available and how to use them. I've worked most of my career in the migrant communities and I know we don't have as many of those in our community, but there are still, um, families within our communities who maybe don't use technology as much, or there's families that don't, um, have that communication. And so I think it's more about educating our parents as to how to access that communication. But the methods are there.
Thank you, Dina. And would you give a hand to Ethan Sayer? Thank you for your question. Appreciate it. It's always good when we hear from students because after all, that's who we're working with. Uh, okay Samantha, could you support a board decision you did not vote for? And why or why not?
Uh, well, yes. I, I could support, uh, a, a decision that I didn't vote for. Um, it, it certainly happens, you know, all the time. Um, but I think the, um, you know, I, when I was, uh, in one of the, uh, Elk Grove Unified, we did a governance training with, with, with our governing board. Um, and this is one of the issues, um, that they addressed. Um, so, so to be a good board member, um, you, you, you vote where you believe, um, but when the decision is made, you move forward, um, as a united front, um, as a, as a governing board. Uh, and I think that that is, um, sends a, a strong message, uh, about the quality of a governing, uh, the governance of a school district, uh, that the, that the board can, can, can work together even if, if, if they don't agree on an individual issue. Thank you.
Thank you Samantha.
I'm gonna mix things up a little bit and we're gonna go ahead and go on the outside and work our way in. So this next question is for Dina Combs Flores in District Area Six. What should your school district do to better prepare students as citizens? Should schools require a patriotic exercise daily?
Well, they definitely need to stand up every morning and pledge allegiance to our flag. I, as a school teacher, for the last 16 years, I have so many of my students, just trying to get them to stand up and to pledge our flag. And that, I am one of the, probably the largest patriots in, I can't, I don't know all of you, but I am a huge patriot and, um, I still remember nine 11. And I think a lot of our younger generation, I, I think it comes down to our parents. Our parents need to teach our kids the importance of this great country and the importance of being a patriot and, and pledging allegiance to our flag.
Thank you, Dina.
And, uh, since, uh, the audience really seemed to like that question, I'm gonna change it up yet again and, uh, ask Chuck the last portion of that question. And then, uh, we'll go to Joanne and, and get Samantha's response. So should schools require a patriotic exercise daily? Chuck?
Well, I, I agree that we should continue to do the flag salute. I think it's the most respectful thing we can do at the start of our day to, for our country. Uh, I think, uh, the other patriotic exercises that are available are to just teach our history the right way and not change it in the future. And that in and of itself will create the patriotism that we should have with our kids. Our kids should be taught about America being exceptional because it is the greatest country in the world. And right now, in many areas, and thankfully it hasn't invaded Clovis yet because I check the social studies book that my daughter brings home. But in many areas of this country, that's what's happening, is we're revising and rewriting history. We can't do that. That's the patriotic exercise. Teach American exceptionalism.
Thank you Chuck.
Joanne?
Jane?
Same question. Should schools require a patriotic exercise daily?
Well, absolutely. I would think that this is one thing we don't have to, we, we really as teachers and administrators should exercise and the children learn that at school. Uh, certainly if they do it at home, that's wonderful. But the repetition of every day, s- when you go to school, uh, instills in you a sense of patriotism. And how else do you learn it, really, as a child? So, uh, it's, um, that's, um, that's a very, very important part of starting and beginning the day. And I am also in favor of prayer where that, not, not inhibiting it and not disallowing prayer if that is something that is, um, wanted and, and children wanna do that too. So I, I don't believe any of that should be left out. It's, it's very important.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you, Joanne.
Samantha Bauer. Same question. Should schools require a patriotic exercise daily?
Absolutely. I worked for Elk Grove Unified School District. We were the school district that defended the Pledge of Allegiance all the way to the United States Supreme Court. One of our parents, Michael Newdahl sued us for, uh, the, uh, alleging, uh, you know, violation of the, uh, separation of church and state because of the word God in the pledge. Um, we won in lower court and the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, of course, overturned it. Uh, and we decided to take it all the way to the United States Supreme Court because we worked for a community that believed in, in it. And I believe that Clovis, um, it has a huge cornerstone of patriotism and, uh, we absolutely need to provide that opportunity for our kids, uh, every single day, uh, whether that's the Pledge of Allegiance or, um, teaching, teaching about, um, the, the great things about, about America. Thank you.
Thank you Samantha. Um, let me start back with, uh, Dina. What is the role of schools in teaching children about topics such as sex education, cyber safety, AIDS, wellness, and bullying?
Thank you. Number one, my three priorities, two of them include, one of them includes that I believe that the parents should parent in the homes and that moral, ethical, social, and political matters, those belong in the home. And the job of an educator is to teach them reading and writing and arithmetic. I am a math teacher by profession and that's what I think we should be doing, is I think we should be teaching academics. Um, but having said that, there are the laws and there are curriculums that have been put in front of us as educators that some of us do not agree with. I definitely don't agree with many of the things that are, are being required in the schools to be taught. Um, but having said so, I think Clovis Unified has continued to do a pretty good job allowing the parents to, um, preview, um, the-
Thank you, Dina.
Next question is for Chuck Der Manuel. What is the role of schools in teaching children about topics such as sex education, cyber safety, AIDS, wellness, and bullying?
Well, first and foremost, the, the role should involve the parent and the parent's consent to any of this teaching and training. I think that the, the way that the agenda is going, it's getting away from just learning about the biology of it and it's getting more into the social aspects of it, which I am completely a hundred percent against. I don't want any creeping of gender ideology or pronouns into our school. That's not the place of the school to do that. The other thing is, there has to be transparency in what the curriculum provides in all of these topics and it should be placed online. There's no reason that a parent should have to hunt for it. I understand that there are videos that need to be previewed by parents and you can't really do that online, but in most cases, our curriculum should be where a parent can access it. And that's why, that's my answer.
Thank you Chuck. All right, uh, Joanne. Same question.
What is the role of schools in teaching children about topics such as sex education, cyber safety, AIDS, wellness, and bullying?
Well, first of all, one of the biggest problems is those are really, should be reflective of the, uh, values taught in the home. The problem we have is we need to protect our children, let them be children. If they're exposed to inappropriate information, uh, be, it, it, it can really be, um, damaging for them and very confusing. And then they go home and they're sharing, um, values and information that their parents had, had no idea were going to be taught in school. So this needs to be very carefully monitored, uh, for the parents' sake and to preserve the innocence of our children.
Thank you. Samantha Bauer. Same question.
So I think it's important to call out the distinction between, um, sexual health and sexual behavior. Um, obviously, sexual behavior should not be taught. That is something that parents should talk to their children about. Uh, sexual health is, in, you refer to as AIDS. Um, I think that, um, is inappropriate, um, you know, from, from, from a, a science standpoint and, and a, and a, um, uh, sexual health, uh, standpoint makes perfect sense. We do have transparency in our schools. Any parent, and we have preview nights, can see exactly what our children are seeing. Um, so I think that we need to continue to make sure that, that, that parents, um, have that opportunity to review that. As far as, uh, bullying, um, we gotta teach our kids, um, that they have a responsibility to contribute to their classroom, to their school, and to their community. Uh, we've gotten a, a little bit afar, um, with that regard and we gotta make sure that our kids understand that they have a role to play within our community, uh, and it's about lifting others and taking care of each other. Thank you.
Thank you Samantha. Believe it or not, we're down to about 12 minutes and so we're going to ask one more question then give you an opportunity to, uh, give us just a total closing statement. So Samantha, let me start with you. Uh, do you support charter schools and why?
Well, this is an interesting one. When I started, um, in public education, um, I did not. Um, I thought that, um, it assumed an ad- an advocate in every child's life and I thought that it took resources away from school districts. However, what I came to understand is charter schools provide a necessary competition in the market. And when you have competition in the market, we press for high performance. And in Clovis Unified, we better be the best. And we are the best and we can compete. So I do believe that parents should have a choice. If their neighborhood school is not performing, they absolutely need to have that choice. Um, and again, I think it's a necessary, um, tension in the, in the system, if you will, uh, to, to press for high performance and give parents an opportunity to choose what's best for their child if they're not getting what they need at their neighborhood school. Thank you.
Thank you Samantha Bauer. Uh, Joanne Burton. Same question. Charter schools?
Well, I think charter schools are an excellent choice. You know, uh, one size doesn't fit all students. Students have a variety of interests. Not all students are interested in the same thing. Uh, the ba- uh, beyond the basics, um, there's many of opportunities for, uh, an individual student to thrive in other ways. And charter schools do give another, um, an, another opportunity. And I'm a hundred percent in favor of them. I'm a hundred percent in favor of parents having more choices. Maybe charter schools isn't enough. Maybe there's another avenue. But, um, I'm a hundred percent in favor of any, any alternative schools that still- that still give the basics and the three Rs and maintain a high level of education for the children and also give them enrichment in areas perhaps that other school campuses would not give them.
Thank you, Joanne Burton. And Chuck Der Manuel, same question. Charter schools.
Thanks. I, I fully support the charter schools. One thing that, one of the biggest reasons is because I, I believe that some of these schools can become experimental or laboratories to see what's working better and what's not and parents should have the choice to send their kids to one of those schools. We're very lucky in Clovis Unified that most of our schools are performing at a level that's way above what the other school districts are. So we might not have as much need today, but they are, they should be a viable option. If you look at what's happening in Fresno and Sanger, we know many parents and families that have kids in those schools and they're flourishing and they have different programs that are available in the regular public schools. So certainly support it and I, thank you.
Thank you, Chuck Der Manuel. And from Clovis District Six, Deana Combs Flores, same question. Charter schools.
Same thing. I agree 100%. But not only just from the perspective of parents having the choice, but also from the perspective of a teacher. Students learn through different modalities and not all students thrive in a large setting. And so having other opportunities such as the online school and the charter schools and the independent study gives students that other opportunity to be in a situation where they can thrive best. My first year, I actually did my student teaching at Clovis East High School in 2006 and then I went and worked at Crescent View Charter School for a year in 2007, which is now Learned for Life. And, and so I'm definitely in favor of it from parental choice, but also to give our students a better option to thrive too.
Thank you, Deana. Guillermo, you have a statement.
Absolutely. Before we go into closing statements, I'd like to let the listening audience and the viewing audience know that every one of the candidates was invited multiple times to our forum debate tonight. And the candidates that you see are the candidates that accepted this invitation. So I want to give them a big round of applause for being here in person. At the same time, I'd like to make a note as well that Area Three, there was no challenger, so the incumbent will continue in their position. So we will have two minutes allotted for closing statements and we'll begin with Samantha.
Thank you. I'm pleased to be endorsed by a former superintendents, Dr. Terry Bradley and Dr. Janet Young, along with the moms on the ground, Clovis Unified. This is an incredible group of, of women that fought to get our kids back in, in the class and, and for mass choice. I know Clovis Unified. In fact, I was on a call the other day with community leader and he says to me, okay, Samantha, I've got a question. Why is it that Clovis Unified is one of the top performing school districts in the state of California, but yet receives some of the lowest per pupil funding? And my answer, culture. We have a culture of excellence and we press for high performance and we have high expectations for everyone in the system. And again, we don't apologize for it. We are bound by a set of core values that, that we, we always come back to and that we always come back to Doc's Charge. It anchors everything that we do and that's important to, to, to value our, our traditions and where we've come from. Because you got it, you got to know where you came from to know where you're going. I feel very strongly we have to, to lean in and make sure that our kids get what they need to get back on track academically. And I am the candidate that has the experience, the knowledge and the passion to deliver for our community. Let's get back to basics. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Joanne Burton, closing statement.
I could never compete with Samantha for having such an intelligent and, and consistent response. I'm going to read you a, something that was posted on the Clovis Unified School District Facebook page. And this, I think you'll understand why I'm reading it. First of all, I'm going to preface by saying, I've lived in, all throughout California and it, it concerns me when Clovis Unified just says we're award-winning schools, we're the best of the best in California. Well, where does California as a state rank? Is anyone too afraid to face that? We're in the bottom. Is that good enough for you? Because it's not for me. And let me read you a parent that posted this concern and I, I'd like you to think about it. It's very long, but I'll read it as quick, quickly as possible. At the beginning of the school year, my son's teacher made a very clear, the curriculum. Recently, my son said that the reason he was not asking for help in his math was because the teacher told them not to ask their parents for help because we can't help them given that we learned very differently. I understand there's a difference, but I have an issue as to what the teacher requested from the children. My son obviously obeyed the teacher as the authority figure and stayed quiet all this time. I learned this recently after my son felt frustrated at his, at his math homework and I assumed that he was doing fine all this time because he was not asking for help. Obviously, he needs help and he wasn't going to come to me. I may be wrong, but I am taking this, taking it as this teacher's attempt to have more authority and if my son needs any type of help, he can only approach the teacher.
Five seconds.
But why? There's another part where the teacher.
Time.
Thank you, Joanne. Chuck Der Manuel.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to thank you for the forum and tell you that we're lucky to have CUSD compared to all the other public school districts. So why I'm running is this. My wife has been a room mom for years and she doesn't do it for our kids. She does it for all of those kids and all the other parents that can't be there. The reason I'm running is not just for my kids, it's for all the other people that can't or don't have the ability to run for this office. In the last two years, we've learned a lot. Many of us believe COVID is over. Our governor may not. So I'm concerned about that. But I want to tell you what my priorities are. There's four of them. I'll go through them as quickly as I can in the next minute and 20. First and foremost, our kids have to be put back first and for two years, they've been put behind the interests of adults. So what does that mean? Number one is their safety. Number two is their education. And number three, as important as any of it, in public school, they need to have that experience. That's why my kids are there. They're not there to be in a smaller community. Second, I want to make sure parents are treating it, treated as customers. For a long time, parents have been not involved. Where did the customers go? So how do we treat them as customers? By being transparent and by being pleasant with their interactions. And I think that happens better at the school level than it does at the district level. We have to introduce accountability and transparency with the communication. Fourth, minimize the state intrusion, maximize our local values. It's not enough to get back to where we were. We have to get back to our local values after what's been destroyed over the last two years within COVID. Our, our, our community values aren't gender ideology. They're not pronouns. They are educating our kids and giving them a great experience. If anything happens in the next couple of months with COVID, who's going to push back? Are we going to stand up for our local values? And last but not least, I would appreciate your support on November 8th. You can find me at chuckderman.com, chuckdermancusd on Instagram and Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Deanna Combs Flores from Area Six.
I just wanted to say, number one, I'm running for this position because I have a vested interest in this school district for the last 16 years. Like I said before, I've had three graduate from Clovis East High School, one graduate this year from Clovis High. And my niece, who I have guardianship of, is currently a junior at Clovis High School right now. And I have always believed since the first time I became a mom at 24 years old and I've been raising kids for 32 years, that it's important for us as parents to be involved with our children's education. And I did that by staying home with my kids and like I said, being involved with PTA and coaching and, and volunteering in rooms. And then I became a teacher myself and I am a conservative educator and I'm a conservative Christian. And I, as a parent, am concerned about what is being sent down to us from the government and what is being pushed on us. And I do want to reiterate what Mr. Der Manuel said. I believe in the last 16 years I've been here, that I believe Clovis Unified School District has done a pretty good job despite all the mandates that have come down and all the things and all the pressures. I do know, because I am a teacher in the classroom, I do know the realities too, not only as a parent, but as an educator, the pressures that come onto school boards and onto administrators, you know, from all angles. It's not an easy place to be. And I just want to continue to be involved in my country. I am a mom, I'm a grandma, I'm a Blue Star mom and I love this country and I've been in this area for 16 years and I love this community and I just want to continue to do my part and be involved.
Thank you, Deana. I would like to thank each of our candidates, Samantha Bauer, Joanne Burton, Chuck Der Manuel from District One, and also Deana Combs Flores from District Six. We just appreciate so much you being here to answer questions. Radio audience, thanks for checking in. And Guillermo, tell them where else they can find this program.
Absolutely. Again, it's streaming live on Facebook for CMAC, on demand at cmac.tv. And a big thank you to CMAC for handling all the video, audio. We, we really appreciate you. A big thank you to the district, Lorenzo Rios and Amy and everyone here at the district and Greg Newman from the Clovis Chamber of Commerce and of course, my staff at Talk Radio 1550 KXEX and also KGMC 43.2, Comcast Channel 77, Dish Channel 39.
If you can't find us, something's wrong. Thank you so much for being here, the audience, so we appreciate your support. Candidates, once again, thank you for taking the opportunity to run for the most important political office in America. Nice to have you with us. Good night, folks.
Now, before the candidates go, I just want to let, let everyone know that we do have reporters here from Fresno Bee, Clovis Roundup and GV Wire. So please, if you can, make a couple of minutes available. Thank you so much.